It's seven o'clock. Could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Do we need to make a motion to put me in charge?
Yeah, we should do that.
I will make a motion that Nick be interim board chair this evening.
Discussion.
Thank you, Nick.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Now you can thank him.
Thank you, Nick.
Motion carries. Okay, I will seek an approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
One second.
Discussion. Changes, additions. All those in favor? Unanimous. Public input.
None that I'm aware of. Anybody online wish to speak?
Seeing none. Approval of the minutes from 8:21.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor?
I did have some typo.
Ooh.
I kind of let Rebecca know, but number six in the agenda under high school alternate ed program information, somewhere down through there, it starts with Nick Flanders states that it is great to have an explanation of this program and asks if two teachers are proficient at this point. I think he meant sufficient, but they're your words, Nick, so probably sufficient.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah. And I also wasn't sure if the pyramid, was that the pyramid data or the pyramid model? I wasn't really sure whether it was.
I think pyramid model is, what is it? What do the minutes read now?
Pyramid data.
Data. Okay.
And then under personnel, under committee reports, my last name is misspelled, B-O-W-E-N. It's missing the E. And that's, that's all that I, everything else seemed fine.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor with the edits? Opposed? Abstained? One abstained.
It just wasn't here.
So now we're on to professional development curriculum update.
That's me. All right. So it's basically just the discussion is a continuation of what we've been doing because we know that it takes multiple years for everybody to get on the same page and for us to really get meaningful data about the curriculum that we have been pushing for. So this is currently year three of us really working hard to get at the K6 level, the use of Bookworms and Eureka Squared. We, it's year two of us having coordinated curriculum for science, global citizenship, math, and ELA throughout elementary school with that coordinated curriculum in ELA and math going all the way up to eighth grade. So, you know, one thing I'll hang my hat on is Deborah Gardner Bosch, who's worked in every single school in our district, said it's the only time in her career that she can remember there being coordinated curriculum in all of our elementary schools where all of the students are, are being able to have access to that curriculum. And so I do want to just make sure to thank the board because that has been work that you have done with us as administrators over the course of the last couple of years is we've come to you to request the like financial pieces that we need to be able to purchase the curricular supplies. So for example, Bookworms started with teachers being part of the LNIC program, which was a state-run PLC where they learned about this program. Teachers wanted to try it as a pilot. More and more teachers got passionate about it and it was teacher-led to decide to try it district-wide. At that point, it was a free curriculum that is accessible online and we were able to get grant funding for the textbooks. But teachers are spending a lot of their time making copies for the workbooks that were available online. And so we came to you and said it would be really beneficial if we could just buy the workbooks pre-made. It will almost, you know, even out for the amount of money we're spending on copy paper versus just buying the workbooks pre-done, but it will save a lot of professionals' time. And you guys said yes, and the teachers are so grateful to have that coming into this year. So another thing that I am so grateful for our teachers' work for is that this year we have curriculum maps for all four subjects for every grade level at the elementary level. And those are not created by me and they are not static. Those are teacher-created and the teachers have gone into their grade level teams over and over to workshop those to make sure that that is something that makes sense. But when we have new teachers start in the district this year, they were able to meet with their grade level teams at our August district release day and get a curriculum map. It does not mean lockstep that on October 27th you need to be on lesson 74, but it means that in October, this is the content that every single kindergartner in our district should be addressing. We know that that coordinated curriculum really helps kids succeed because we have movement among schools, because all of those kids, we hope, will end up here at Mill River and will have had this common experience and because the curriculum that we are choosing is both educator-supported, they're the ones that are choosing the programs and the curriculum we're using, and it is research proven to be successful. And so we're already seeing the data show major gains in our, in our practice when it comes to English, language, arts through the use of this program.
Can I throw a new teacher quote in? During new teacher orientation, I was talking to one of our folks who has experienced teaching but is new to the district, and Jody had asked him, hey, how's it going looking at the Bookworms materials? And then I had continued a little bit of a conversation with him later, and the way he put it was, I'm not going to name the other curriculum program. Well, you know, with, with X, you know, there's a lot of work to follow it and put it together and deliver it and make it happen, but with Bookworms, a lot of it's, a lot of it's done. So I can spend a lot more time focusing on my students, you know? So I think that's great feedback from a new teacher to district comparing two different curriculums that we could be handing them on day one. In other words, we're handing them something that's really usable on day one versus handing them something that they got to go and run and do a lot of work to make usable on day one, so. Sorry for interrupting.
And I, I think it's important to note that we're just going to keep coming back to it and allowing those, those educator professional teams to say, this is working, this needs tweaking as we go.
Okay. Do you mind if we ask questions?
Yeah, please.
So are you, are the teachers finding, I know that all of our elementary schools kind of had different schedules and class sizes and configurations and everything, and are they finding it, are they finding it good for different kinds of settings? Because every setting, I would imagine, is a little bit different, and how adaptable is it to that?
So the ELA program is a hard, a difficult ask because we're asking for three 45-minute periods.
A day?
A day.
Daily?
Daily.
Yes.
One of those is a DI block.
Which is direct instruction, I'm guessing.
Differentiated instruction.
Differentiated instruction.
So like, like kind of like a win period. And that's a time that we really can, can have our special educators and our interventionists collaborate as well.
Is that all grades through?
All through fifth grade. The sixth grade program is a 60-minute-a-day request. So, you know, it is a big ask of educators and their program and their, their time.
Well, it's a big ask of kids and their schedule, too.
Yep. So it was something that we, we underwent with measure, with measured progress. So last year, when the, the first two years we were using it was like, we're going to push in here and there, see how we feel. It was really educators saying they wanted this. We held, three years ago, we held a, like a statewide conference where we let any educator who was interested come in and our teachers talked about how much they liked it. And I think really it being teacher-led, like teachers who've been in our, in our district for over 30 years saying like, I thought I really liked the way I was doing things, then I started doing this and I look at even better.
Yeah. No, I mean, you don't, I, you don't have to sell it. I mean, I know it's, it sounds like it's great and I just was curious about the adaptability of it because I know in previous programs, it's now I'm going, you know, putting on a different hat, that it was really hard to kind of pull kids in and out, but it sounds like there's a DI block, differentiated block, so that's, that's good. And, you know, and then how does it impact the other, now you were talking about the integrated curriculum, I think you called it, between math, like is math and science or science and social studies, are those being taught in blocks or how is that happening?
So Eureka Squared is, is the math curriculum and we're actually teaching global citizenship and science separate from the math and English curriculum.
So global citizenship is social studies?
Social studies, yes, sorry.
That's okay. I like global citizenship. I think that sounds what we need, for sure.
We found that when they were integrated in, they just, the kids weren't necessarily getting everything that they needed. That was the feedback we were getting from their middle school teachers. So we, we pushed it out. Now, we're two years into the curriculum that we've chosen on that and teachers feel really strongly positive about mystery science. The, the global citizenship curriculum, they're still kind of deciding to figure out, but my stance is like, we need to give it two years and then we can talk about it, right? Because even though it was chosen by majority, it doesn't mean it has to be the right one. If the data's not showing us, it's definitely the right one.
When you talk about data, I guess I'm curious, like what, what that means and if there's like specific data that you're paying closer attention to? And as a board, is there data that like when you all present to us that we can kind of, you know, like is there certain stuff that we should be paying attention to, too?
Yeah. So the data I care about most is in classroom teacher assessment.
Okay.
It just, to me, that's the most meaningful, but it's not the only thing that I pay attention to. So STAR 360, the TCAP, the ELA assessments, the, like everything on our LCAP, our Local Common Assessment Plan, are all pieces that I do pay attention to because for science and social studies at the elementary level, we don't have like, like big common assessments that really does have to be teacher-level assessments.
Right.
And then teacher perception and feedback really matter so much as well. So like if we look at, there's a guy called John Hattie who's like the, like the top researcher of all education. He took like every education research project like that's ever been done and then just did this meta of like what is, has the biggest impact of anything? And teacher efficacy had the biggest impact of anything in schools. So that is always in my head when I am trying to make plans, is honoring that that has the biggest impact.
And when I talk data, you, you hear me use the language of leading indicators and lagging indicators. Jody's talking about those leading indicators. What's the, what's the assessment students did on Friday to inform instruction next week? And those are the things that we do care more about, you know? We hope and we expect that as we make progress here, those lagging indicators come along, but we try to do a lot of our day-to-day data work with as close to the students as we can, if that makes sense.
So if I could use the social studies just as a quick example, I was going to wait until this year to pick a social studies curriculum. Teachers were like, no, 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 we're so close, just pick one, let's go. So I picked three that aligned with New England's state's scope and sequences because Vermont doesn't have a social studies scope and sequence. Sent those out to all the elementary teachers.
Take a look at them, though.
Take a look at these three. Tell me what you think. We went with the majority. Last year, the request was teach the topics for your grade level. You don't have to use this program or curriculum. We're going to buy it for you, but try to play with it. There was some like, I'm not sure, yes, maybe. So this year, in our release day PD strands, one of the choices that teachers can pick is just about how to use that program if they want to focus on that. So that I'll keep taking the data and how teachers are feeling about it and how that's going.
And, and there's a really interesting thing there when you're adopting a program very early on and when you're not mandating, everybody needs to do everything starting tomorrow. Good luck. There's a problem when you look at the data because you, if you see things going well or not, well, if only half of people are using the program, then you can't make a decision about the program based on that data. So it's a little bit of a, like Jody said, two years out, we can have a little more conversation about the data. First, we need to make sure that there's some fidelity, but I think there's a lot of value in, folks, you asked for this, some of you are ready for it, some of you might not be, let's take a year to get used to it before we talk about, okay, what is fidelity? Let's make sure everybody is using this to a certain level. Then when we look at the data, we can, we can make a better guess about the program versus, you know, just are people using it or not? Bad data might just mean people aren't using it. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Trying to sort that out, trying to be responsive, trying to use all the data. Questions before I move on?
Did you have one?
Somebody had one.
I was more of a comment than a...
I'll take it.
So for any of the new board members, as you start to go from school to school, you'll hear a lot of the teachers and even the principals talk about all the LNIC work that's gone on. And then you'll, you'll hear when the middle school teachers present that having that work come through, they don't spend the first three months when they get to middle school assessing, well, I can tell that such-and-such a student came from Clarendon because they're strong in this area and Wallingford came from here because they're strong in this area. And they have to kind of blend all of that and level it all out the first couple of months of school versus now that they're all on a common teaching platform, they all kind of come in the first day of school knowing what they already know. So it's been...
What they, well, what they've been exposed to, yeah.
Exposed to, which is, which is the plan, which seems to be great. So I always look forward to when the middle school comes in and presents and presents their data because you get the, the forward-looking.
Yes. This is, this is what we're going for.
Yeah. And I just, I think this just clarifying for me maybe. So lagging, would that be, you're talking about two years out from when you know that a program has been taught with fidelity, as you put it? Yeah. That, is that what you're talking about? I just wondered what your lag time is that you would, your lagging indicators would be like two years after?
Let me clarify that because I think you're asking a different question. When I say lagging indicator, I mean state-level tests that we take once a year.
Oh, oh, okay.
And, you know, so you say, could a student be making growth in reading weekly and we could see that growth happening weekly? Leading indicator.
Right.
Are we going to see their growth on the state-level test for reading? If there are four levels of reading behind, no. We're never going to see that.
No, I guess I would, yeah, I guess I am not asking that lagging isn't the right question.
You were wondering, when, when have we used it long enough before we can evaluate its effectiveness?
Right. So let's say you take a kindergartner, right, and then they go through K-1, 2 with this program, will the fourth and fifth grade teachers then start to see a difference? Like how many years? You know, because I know teachers are very aware whether programs working or not and...
So I'm confident at this point in the math, ELA, and science programs that we have based on leading indicators and teacher feedback and in classroom assessments. Math has been in play the longest. The social studies in its second year. If at the end of this year, the feedback is majority are feeling it's not serving the needs, uncomfortable at that point, trying something else. I would not be in that, like, it's so conditional. I would not be in that stance with an ELA program. But social study, it just, you know, I think it's based on, on the program, on the level of the student day, on the strength of the research behind the program, on the level of buy-in from teachers and wanting it, like, so conditional. I'm just being super transparent about where I think that we are collectively with this.
Thank you.
Social studies always lag.
You, you don't get tested, you know, till you get to an AP test, so, yeah.
Can I say that as a social studies teacher?
I am 1-2.
Yeah.
And we did buy this specific program all the way up through eighth grade. And so, you know, also watching to see in year two whether it's used at all in middle school. So at the secondary level, we are going into year three now of requesting a published syllabus for every single middle and high school course. And so that has been a big deal. So just getting that, that piece of work, that transparency out to families. So you can find that on the Mill River Curriculum website if you go to the Course of Studies. You can click through the Course of Studies and there should be a live link to every single class on there if you ever wanted to know. And those would include the teacher's retake policy, major units of study, anchor texts, the proficiencies that they're using, contact information for that teacher. Really, we've been in a place since I took this job in the district of, of really focusing on tier one at the secondary level, just talking about getting that, coming back from the pandemic and getting that core expectation of, of main classroom instruction really, really solid. When it comes to PD, trust building has kind of been my focus for the last couple of years on really trying whenever humanly possible to meet the requests of educators and the surveys that we give out on the PD. And the very honest struggle of like frequently, those requests are opposing, right? So, you know, you get 20 people who want you to never do this again and 20 people who want you to only do this again, right? And so, and trying to balance switching it up for people so that they're, they're not getting bored with having the same thing over again, but also understanding if we do a different thing new every time, there won't be a continuity of learning. So this year, what we're trying is a little bit of a combo. So the PLCs are going to be at the building-based level after school because people didn't like going on Google meets to meet with their grade teams all around the district last year. It felt a little like hard at the end of the day. And we're going to be doing data-focused PLCs at the building level. So every month, the principal will be taking the group through a different set of data. So discipline, attendance, math data, ELA data. They're going to start with the VT cap data as lagging data just because I think it's going to be like a really safe data set where no one's going to feel like, oh gosh, we're really looking at my stuff. But that's what we're doing for PLCs. For release days, we're going to do some things we always do, like the retirement celebration is really important, two building days where the principals get some time in their buildings with their staff. And then we're going to do two department grade level times. That's really when they can just sit down with their people and talk about what they need to. And then for the rest of them, we're trying for the first time since I've been in this role, a choose-your-strand choice. So that's really trying to differentiate for educators to say, hey, because last year we said like, you know, if you're elementary, you really, really need to focus on this Bookworms curriculum. If you're secondary, you really, really need to focus on this restorative practice stuff we're doing. This year, we're saying, tell us which thing you want. So the choices are going to be continuing to work on, on that ELA piece and that TCI one that I said, the social studies curriculum. There is one on rigor and enrichment for secondary level, so the kids that, you know, want to really go high. One on tier-two interventions in the classrooms, so helping kids who you're teaching to the main group and they just need a little bit more how to design for that. One on like a independent studies for personal action projects that Brian's going to be running. So if, if you don't want to study the things that we're offering, then you go to Brian and he's going to help you set up an action research project on your own.
Study whatever you want, which is great because that's a pretty, a pretty popular thing in the education realm. I mean, you can go and take courses on action research. So to be able to identify what is, what is something that I see in my classroom that is a problem that I would like to solve? What is my problem in practice? What's my guiding question? How do I set up research in my classroom to try and address that? So I'm actually really excited about hanging out with folks and doing that work this year.
A session on emotional regulation and a session on assistive technology. Any questions?
It's slightly adjacent to what you're talking about. I just don't, I was curious, what is the, when you were talking about especially amongst elementary schools, what is the level of like communication and coordination, let's say, between like the three, four teachers across like each school building?
So they, this year, they got the full day in August to meet and they'll get two of the release days to meet and then informally a lot because we're trying this kind of, last year, they got almost every release day to meet and had PLCs after school. It just kind of depends on the year.
Has it kind of shifted a lot over the last few years with like the more emergent like virtual world and that connectivity and then like having shared curriculum? Is it kind of growing more where there's like a team that kind of support each other?
Yeah, I, I do think so, especially, you know, we have, we have some new folks this year and Deborah tries really hard to get a mentor at the same grade level. And so then that connection ends up being really, really strong. Dropping things. Anything else? Backing away slowly, got off pretty easy. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on to budget annual calendar.
And I'm going to throw this up on the screen just so we have it up here while we're talking about it. This, folks who were around last year or previous years will notice that this is pretty familiar. New folks, this is, you know, under board policy, in one of our policies, we outline the budget process and one of the steps of that budget process is to bring a calendar to the board. So finance met in August and we looked at this together and it is here now in front of you to discuss as a group. Okay. Give me a second and I will get this up on the screen for you. Does anybody have any questions, comments, thoughts?
Is that, and just a question.
Yep.
The early October overview budget scenarios? And it says, and hold focus group meetings?
Yes.
Did we have those before?
Yeah, that, those were the, the public, the two public meetings that we did the last two years, yeah.
Yep.
We did them in the library.
Yeah.
Yep.
We sometimes maybe call them focus groups, but we probably are just a little more informal and say, you know, budget meeting.
Yeah, right, yeah, okay.
But the same thing.
I didn't know if it was the same thing or not.
Yeah. No, good question.
Thank you, Brian.
Absolutely, Stephen.
Bringing this up, I'm sorry, I'm having a lot of technical difficulties with my internet on this then.
No worries. No worries.
I, I have a question of just curious about how those meetings went last year, the ones that you all are talking about. And then, like, do we foresee, just like, with all, like, all the talk about stuff going on statewide and taxes and all that, like, how are we kind, do we need to kind of, like, prepare ourselves with kind of a joint way to talk about this budget year?
Yeah. I, I think that, you know, that, that wonderful language of the school board will assure adoption of a budget. It's pretty strong language. But I think that really calls for exactly what you're talking about, Kimberly. We got to be on the same page. We, we have to know what our strategy is. We have to know that it supports our students, it supports our staff, and it supports our communities. And we have to be able to talk about how it does support all three of those groups. I think at the finance meeting, we discussed some initial strategies where we have a three-year plan, where we do feel that we are working hard to support students, staff, and communities. This past year, we had Clarendon, Wallingford, and Shrewsbury, we had tax increases after CLA and everything happened from about 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5. I don't remember the exact number, but Wallingford was 4.4, 5-ish, and then it was up to about 7%. So, when the rest of the state was talking about, on average, 20% increases, we did work hard to have, you know, far smaller increases than a lot of our region and a lot of our state. The three-year plan that we talked about at our 814 Finance Committee meeting really mapped out, how do we use the surplus that we have to, to do the same or better the next three years? While everybody else is probably going to be looking at, again, a 20% on average increase because things haven't changed, you know, the fundamentals haven't changed. You know, we, we feel fairly confident that we can do the same thing we did, if not a little bit better, next year and the year after and possibly the year after. We, we would be incredibly disappointed if the state had not done anything after three years. Currently, there is the Commission on the Future of Education in the State of Vermont that has been meeting. That's what the legislature put together in the yield bill at the end of last year. They are, in theory, will have a report out in December with some initial thoughts of, here are things that need to happen. So, we are, we are hopeful that in December, there will be some good work done and some plans that the legislature could take up and have in place, probably not for the year after, we're not that hopeful, but at least for the year after that, you know? So, a three-year plan for us seems really prudent, seems really reasonable. We had a five-year plan last year and we modified that pretty heavily because things changed a heck of a lot last year. Having a five-year plan doesn't seem prudent because I don't think we can see into the future that far, but I think three years, three years is reasonable enough to be comfortable. So, does that help a little, Kimberly? I know that doesn't, that doesn't completely map out.
And that was a good synopsis of the, the finance meeting that we had the other day is that, as much as the state and the media want to tout or promote double-digit increases, which goes against what the Mill River District saw, I think it's our obligation to say, these are the numbers. We realistically saw 4.3 in Wallingford. Timmuth saw 7%. These are the facts.
Timmuth or Shrewsbury?
One of the two.
I think, I think Timmuth I don't talk about because Timmuth was reassessed.
Yeah.
And the reassessment meant people were all over the place based on the reassessment, yeah. So, it's hard to.
Whatever the real numbers were, those were the real numbers.
Yeah, Clarendon was like 7.2.
Maybe we should get those straight before, early October.
So, so here's what.
That is what we talked about at length at the last finances. Before we go to present a budget, we can say, this is what reality was.
And my plan is, as we advertise those, those budget meetings on Front Porch Forum, that I'll put those numbers there and I'll link to the state map where people can even verify those numbers. That way, we're saying, hey, here's what we did, come to a meeting and tell us how you're feeling, so that they can get that message at the same time. I was thinking about just sending one out to give people the numbers, but then I thought it would be a little more impactful if we gave them the numbers when we told them when they could come talk to us, that that might go together well.
And we could promote that. That's another thing we could promote at our community conversation as well.
Yeah. Len?
A couple of things. I would urge all board members to attend the Finance Committee meetings.
Absolutely.
And I'm not on the Finance Committee, but I just think it's important when you talk about us being on the same page. I remember my first year, or early years here, I didn't go to Finance. And then, when the budget was brought before the board, I was like, where the heck did this stuff come from, you know? And that wasn't good. It wasn't good, so.
And just as an add-on to that, the finance and building and grounds, we're going to start meeting back-to-back.
Yeah.
So, that gives you an opportunity to kind of really see where the money's going.
And Finance meets here, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so, I mean, you can, you can access it as hybrid, so it's not like.
It'll be hybrid, yeah.
You have to. And I would hold off on the Front Porch Forum because people in Clarendon just got their tax bill.
Yeah. Well, you know, but, but Len, you say that. I, I talked to somebody from Wallingford and they said, wow, taxes went up 10%. And I said, well, that doesn't sound right. Here, here's the map showing that the education impact on, on taxes was 4.45, sorry, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head. And I said, oh, did your municipal taxes go up? And they said, yeah, but it was like 5 cents, like 41 to 46. I was like, whoa.
That's a percent.
That's a, that's more like a 10% increase, where if you look at, it's just interesting, if you look at our tax rate, that's like $1.30 and if it goes up to $1.38, you go, well, that was 8 cents, wow. The town, town only went up 5 cents, but the percentage is a lot bigger, you know? So, I think, I actually think it might be a good idea if people get that right after they get their bill, because some people might look at their bill and go, that's more than they said it was.
Yeah, good point.
And I'd like to be able to say, but, you know, check the state's data to see what, you know, confirm what we said, because I want folks to know that we're not just making numbers up, that we're, you know, I mean, I hear you, Len.
Yeah.
Bills are coming out and people are feeling it and it's a lot more real than when we just talked about it in the spring.
Yeah.
But that might be, might be a good timing to get them out.
Well, you know, and, again, particularly in Clarendon, some folks, it's not a big deal.
In some folks, it really is.
In some folks, it really is. And I'm sure, I'm sure that's true in all the communities, just Clarendon.
Yeah, and gosh, we wish it didn't have to be a 4% to 7% increase.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you wish it wouldn't even have to be a 4% increase, but, but so much of this, and I think that's important for the taxpayers to understand, so much of this is out of the hands of the us, sitting around this, these tables. It really is.
And I think another message is, we're trying, we're trying.
Yeah.
And we're not going to cut our nose off to spite our face, we're going to serve our kids, but gosh, we're trying. It's a hard, it's a hard needle to thread, but we're trying. I think more than ever, Len's advice of, come to the Finance Meeting, we will try to keep you in the loop on what we're discussing, but it's hard to take an hour-long meeting and give it all to you in a, you know, 10, 20-minute board update. We'll do some bigger budget presentations at the full board, but it's still, you can't make up for all the conversation and all the ground and this stuff gets complicated. A summary, it's hard, it's hard to give you a summary that is understandable so you can explain it to people, because the background stuff is so funky, that if you don't hear some of the background stuff, the summary, somebody's going to say, well, what, how, how is, how can that be true? I don't know, because it's so complicated and behind the scenes, it's messy, you know? So, I think there is a lot of value.
Well, and the, and the other part is, you can participate.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, even though you're not a member of the committee, you can ask questions, you can make statements, you know, that, you can participate. So, I think that's important as well.
Absolutely.
So, taking Brian's cue, any questions on the calendar?
Do, do we want to talk about those October focus group meetings? Typically, we had done, like, an earlier one and a later one, and what we had done in the past was, we did one before a board meeting to try and make it a little easier to get a couple more board members there, and we had done one on a non-board meeting night. So, we had done, like, maybe a 6 o'clock on one night and we had done maybe like a 4 o'clock one afternoon.
Um, Brian, um, the, the community engagement is going to meet.
Yep.
October or whatever, though. I looked at the date. And that might be, we could just do, kind of combine.
Do the budget forum as the.
The community conversation as a budget folk, as a focus group on that date. And then, if you wanted to.
16th, October 16?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that'd be like at 5:45, we've been, well, we'll see how that, we'll keep the time a little flexible, we'll see how this.
We have enough meetings to.
Yeah, we'll see how this one goes.
Tentative.
See if we have, how many people.
Before a board meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, it's right before.
The other, the other one would be a non-board meeting.
Right.
And I think we had done, I think we had done them in the same week, I think. Maybe I'm wrong, but I think we did them, like, we would do the Wednesday before the board meeting and then the next day, we did it right after school.
Yeah.
Something like that? Is that.
Good idea.
Reasonable to try and do that?
I think so.
Okay. Okay. I can, we can have those as some tentative dates, we'll check back in at our next board meeting and see how we feel about that. Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Any more discussion on the calendar?
Questions about this process in the next month or so? Okay.
On to committee reports, we will start with personnel.
Great. We met tonight earlier and we have some contracts to bring to the full board for approval. First up, we have, and I'll make a motion that we offer Kayla Griswold a contract for educational support staff, 1.0 full-time equivalency.
I'll make the motion. Oh, you made a motion, I'll second it.
I made a motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Mill River.
Yeah, I was looking for that last sheet, and I'll be darned if I can find it. Got it, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, we're good, thank you. Next up, and again, I'll start by making, making a motion to offer Amanda Berrio a contract 1.0 full-time equivalency for, as a teacher at K through six, and she actually is an elementary school counselor. I made that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
That's going to be largely Shrewsbury-Timmuth coverage, but then spending a little time at Clarendon as well.
Do we have another elementary school counselor?
We have two. We have a full-time at Clarendon and a full-time at Wallingford.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, abstained? Okay, thank you. Next, I'll make a motion to offer Kristen Newton a contract 1.0 full-time equivalency as educational support staff.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion.
That is paraeducator at Clarendon.
Any other? All those in favor? Opposed, abstained? Thank you. Next, I'll make a motion to offer a contract to Virginia Daly, 1.0 full-time equivalency, nursing support staff. Here at Mill River?
Yep.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained? Next, we have a letter of resignation from Michaela Stone, our speech and language pathologist, and I would make a motion that we accept her letter of recognition, rec, what is it, resignation.
All right, I'll second that one.
Thanks, Greg. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next is another letter, letter of resignation from Betsy Moyer. She is resigning her position as health office nurse here at Mill River. So, I would make that a motion to accept that resignation.
I'll second that. I can second.
Thank you, Kim. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained? Next, we received from Kim Menieri, our athletic director, a list of high school and middle school coaches, and in committee, we decided that it's best just to bring the whole list to be approved at once. Most of the folks are returnees in the various sports, so I would make a motion that we accept, oh, the one thing, well, I'll make a motion that we accept the list of high school and middle school coaches as presented by Kim Menieri.
And elementary.
And the elementary, too? Five, six?
Yes, elementary AD and coaches, thank you, page two.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion. I, I did want to just make a comment that, that boys varsity soccer is back, which is kind of exciting.
Very cool.
I'm all the way home, it's Canada on Saturday.
See the state.
So, it's kind of cool.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, abstained? Next meeting is October 2nd. Next meeting is October 2nd at 6:30. Thank you.
Policy. I bring you no policies to review this evening, and our next meeting is 9:10.
And one thing I'll throw in, if you don't mind, Nick, G-15, and this is kind of agenda building, we will have G-15 on for second read at our next meeting.
Timing thing.
Is that the camera one?
Getting it in the Herald, yes.
It's a timing thing for getting it warned and posted and.
Yeah.
Buildings and Grounds, I was unable to attend the last meeting, so I'm going to defer to somebody that was there.
Oh, I was there. Who else was there? Some technical difficulties, but, oh, gosh, I didn't even take notes, I couldn't help you, sorry.
You were there, you had a meeting?
We were there. We had a meeting. We reviewed the five-year plan, and.
The next meeting will be combined with Finance.
Finance, which will be on.
I'm looking.
October 1st, and not quite combined, we'll do Buildings and Grounds, I believe, at 5, and we're moving that Finance Committee at 5:30.
Yes, back-to-back.
Thank you.
If we can get that, I don't know, I don't think Finance has been warned, but we did have a hybrid link together for 5.
Correct.
So if we can have that changed to a 5:30.
Correct. Yeah, that's easy, easy shift on our end.
Community Engagement.
See, that one I was ready for. So our next meeting is scheduled for September 18th, it's going to be at 6:30. Prior to that, we're going to have our Community Conversation meeting, I guess. I've put together an announcement, we've kind of reviewed it, and I will be ready to send it out, I'm thinking tomorrow, I'm going to run it by Brian one last time and make sure.
And Carol, when we warned that, my thought was, we were going to put that language ahead of the warning, so that people that get the notice of the warning of the official meeting will see that, too.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Yeah, that sounds really good, yeah. And, yeah, we do mention in the announcement, it's not a meeting for Board members to undertake or propose any Board actions, and as such, is not subject to open meeting law, however, we do intend for all information to be publicly shared, and for all members of the public to feel welcome. So hopefully, we're going to do a hybrid the first time, I wasn't sure about that, but I think we'll do a hybrid. We're going to limit it to 10 participants from the public, just, that'll give us the time, I think it's about 45 minutes for everybody who wants to participate, to participate. And then, we're also going to have Board members representing Policy, thank you, Lenny. Finance, thank you, myself, I guess, unless somebody else wants to come. And then, Nick, I think you volunteered to do Building and Grounds, and Kim's going to represent Community Engagement, and we're just going to do a quick review of what our charge is, so people understand the roles of those committees. So hopefully, it all comes together, I have no idea, but anyway, appreciate everybody's support for that.
Thank you.
Any questions or anything? Okay, good.
And then, on to Finance. Stephen, do you want to do those, or is your tech working okay?
Yeah, yeah, I got, I got myself plugged in, so I can, yeah, thank you. So we got a pretty good overview earlier of what our last Finance meeting was, which was checking it out, going over the budget calendar for this season, and also discussing the importance, and maybe some ways of Finance and Community Engagement can, can work together this season, and hope that Board members can all stay pretty, pretty well-informed on budget creation, so that they might be able to represent what we're doing in the community if, if asked by community members. Yeah, and we have some payroll warrants, can you guys still hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
We have some payroll warrants. The amount, August 30th, payroll warrant in the amount of $629,201.80. I guess, I'll move for that to be signed by the Board.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right. And, and our accounts payable warrants, one general fund. Brian, what's the KS and MF on these?
That would be, those are prepared by either Karen Friends or Michael Finch, so that way, we know who prepared them. Good question.
Okay, so a general fund in the amount of $133,643.39. Another general fund in the amount of $6,631.97, and officials in the amount of $862.50, for a total of $141,137.86. I'll move the Board to sign these payable warrants.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Our next Finance meeting, I believe, yes, is going to be October 1st, right following the heels of the Buildings and Grounds meeting, so 5:30 on October 1st, where we will be discussing some budget ideas, and initial budget ideas, and surplus management, I believe. All right. That's all, Finance.
So transact other legal business, we need to.
Somebody to sign as Chair, so that Nick can keep signing as Clerk, if that seems reasonable to folks.
I can do that, if you want.
So we'll make a motion that Carol sign as the Board Chair for this evening.
Second.
Any discussion? Say, none, all those in favor?
It's just easy for me to get it.
All those opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Any other legal business?
Nope.
Agenda building, so we'll have the G.
G-15.
Yeah.
We're going to have a good chunk of time to do our bylaws, so kind of like tonight, curriculum and budget, that big chunk of time, we'll be able to spend some of that on bylaws. We do have Mill River Guidance Presentation up on the calendar, so those would be our two big items. Anything we're missing that we should be doing otherwise? Because that's what's on our calendar.
Well, Brian, I'll just keep bugging you on this, do you have the dates for when we'll be at the elementary schools?
I can tell you when those are, yeah. I actually, we had set the dates last time around, but I didn't have them filled in which school was which.
Okay.
I will email this to the Board tomorrow, let me make a note, email elementary dates, I'll tell you right now, but if you forget them, I'll email them to you. Shrewsbury's going to be October, 2nd October meeting, Tinnmouth is going to be 2nd November meeting, Clarendon is going to be 2nd March meeting, and Wallingford is 2nd April meeting, so that we're kind of avoiding that as best as we can, we'll try and we'll see what happens.
The storms.
I'm trying to avoid this now.
Are you saying like, so not October 2nd, but the second meeting?
Yes, second meeting in October.
So those are the.
And I'll send specific dates to.
Yeah, because those are the Community Engagement meetings, so that'll work out in terms of conversations, we can have them around, so I, thank you.
Do we require an executive session?
None that I'm aware of.
I just, sorry, I forgot, the Shrewsbury day's coming up, if anyone wants to come at September 15th, Monday.
Nice.
Yeah, can I, I, I did forget, because I was so focused on this Community Conversation, that, just a reminder that the open houses are happening, I do have those dates written down, if people aren't aware, but, yeah, you can just show up.
This coming Wednesday, Clarendon's open house at 6 o'clock.
Thank you.
And Mill River's spaghetti dinner on Thursday of this coming week at 5, and then the open house fall, well, during that time, sort of at 6.
Yeah.
And then, Timmuth has an open house on the 16th, I'm not sure what time, I think you, you know, you had that one.
And I think Shrewsbury.
Yeah, Jen is, Jen is on the call, maybe Jen could tell us, Jennifer, what time Tinnmouth's open house is? I think it's 6.
It's 5:30 to 7.
5:30 to 7, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. That's it.
Great. No, good reminders, good reminders.
I do.
Could you shoot me an email? Please.
And we will adjourn by consensus at 8:01.
All right, thank you, everybody.